So here I can't control my own microphone for a change. Great. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting in our Tuesday study session. It is Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. The time is 12:10 PM. We are very excited to be joined by our peers at the Port of Tacoma and the Port of Tacoma Commission today. We're going to begin the Pierce County Council's Tuesday study session first with that joint study session on a couple of very interesting and significant study session topics and discussion again with our peers at the Port of Tacoma Commission will then recess and the Pierce County Council will then move to its rest of its agenda in Tuesday's study session. But again, we're very grateful to be joined by our colleagues at the Port of Tacoma Commission. Before I introduce the Pierce County Council members that are here, I'd like to turn it over to President of the Port of Tacoma Commission for introduction remarks and introduction of peers.
Great. Thank you so much. And we're really excited to do this. It's been a long time coming. We've talked about it for a long time as well, and then COVID hit. And so we're grateful to be here. But I'd like to introduce our, our, I'm sorry, our commissioners. We have Commissioner John McCarthy. We have Commissioner Dick Marzano, Commissioner Kristen Aing. And unfortunately, Commissioner Meyer couldn't be here today. But I'd also like to introduce Executive Director Eric Johnson, who's over here. And I believe that you're going to introduce staff. Is that correct?
I am, but I don't want to jump in front of Chairman Mello's introduction. His colleagues.
Please proceed, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you very much. It's good to be here. Eric Johnson.
Johnson. What's wrong with my brain? It's Dr. Johnson.
No problem at all. Eric Johnson, Executive Director, Port of Tacoma. It's good to be here. There are only two governments in Pierce County that represent the entire county. One of them is obviously Pierce County itself. The other is the Port of Tacoma. We are the only countywide jurisdiction other than Pierce County itself. And so it is very good to be here because we take that that countywide perspective very seriously. We have a nice view out of our office windows, but I think your view actually beats ours. Some of you were joking, you can keep an eye on us up here, which is true, actually, if you look out the window. But we're excited to be here. We're going to have a study session on climate and air issues. You're going to be hearing from a couple of Port of Tacoma senior staff. One is Jason Jordan, our Director of Environmental and Planning, and then Steve Nicholas, who's the Senior Manager of Air Quality Division. And I will yield now the podium to them. So Jason, take it away.
Dr. Johnson, thank you so much for being with us and for preparing your staff today. Before we proceed, I want to make sure we introduce members of the Pierce County Council. Vice Chair Campbell is in our Zoom room and fully participating that way. We're also joined by Councilmember Hitchen, Councilmember Morel, Councilmember Herrera, and Councilmember Croover. Councilmember Denson is excused from our Tuesday study session. Excuse me. She is, I see her online. Councilmember Denson is online. Thank you. So all seven members of the Pierce County Council are here today to participate. President Keller, any other opening remarks before we move to your staff to begin the presentation today?
No, thank you very much, though.
Thank you. Well, Jason, we welcome you to the podium. I want to remind all members around the discussion table, all your mics are green. They're all hot. They can hear every single word you say, even with sidebar conversations. It's a very good microphone system. But please be aware of that. We'll just, when you have something to share or a question, ask you to just raise your hand and we'll tee you up for what I hope is a very active discussion together. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Chairman Mello. Really great to be here. Thank you, County Council members, and of course, the Port Commissioners. Thank you so much. I'm going to quickly kick this off. I will warn you. Thank you for the hot mic tip. I'm just coming back from a long vacation, so I'll do my best here to be as concise as possible. But I'm going to quickly turn it over to the real experts in the room, which is Steve Nicholas, our Air Quality Sustainable Practices Manager, and then your own Ryan Dix is just really, these guys are really doing some stuff on this front around decarbonizing our environment. So that's really exciting. And thank you again for the opportunity to be here. Next slide, or I guess I should put the slideshow up. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. So again, you, next slide, please. Excellent. This is great. So just a couple of quick things. We're going to talk a lot about ourselves and the great work that the county and the ports are doing. And that's really around Scope 1, Scope 2, and we'll explain that. But Scope 3 is really, oh, thank you. Scope 3 is really where we're going to see significant dent and carbon reductions. And so this is a great slide because the Port of Tacoma and the Seaport Alliance are really taking a serious initiative around working with the international community around decarbonizing. And this is a great slide that just highlights some of those things. So when you think about from a port perspective, obviously vessels, vessels are a significant contributor of carbon. So it's cargo handling equipment and trucks. And so just a couple of things I wanted to highlight around that, working closely with the International Maritime Organization, the IMO, which some of you may have heard of, you know, the port is a key player there, really pressing for those international standards. We recognize, and there's some great examples of that around emission control areas that the IMO has set up where if it can be done internationally, it will get done. And so a real focus there, and several of our commissioners, both in Tacoma and in Seattle, have played a key role in developing or recommending stronger rules and incentives to accelerate zero emissions at the IMO. Then there's also the Cargo Owners for Zero Emission Vessels. That's a group of about 20 retailers, including Amazon, Target, and REI, that are really committing to reducing their emissions to zero emissions by 2030. And I want to pause there because I've been in the port business now for almost 20 years. And one of the things that I've really seen in the last few years, even with COVID and coming out of that pandemic, the, it used to be when the economy got a little bit slow, stagnant, or actually maybe even got into a recession, one of the first things that would go in our industry at that international level is the environmental initiatives. And we are not seeing that anymore. It's really exciting to be in this industry right now because no longer is the economy an excuse. They're really moving forward. And this COZF, Zero Owners for Zero Emission Vessels is a great example of where industry has said, hey, we recognize there's a problem. We gotta, we gotta work on it. So it's just a great example. It's a real, I think, sea change, pun intended, in our industry, where we're seeing that the beneficial cargo owners, you know, Walmarts of the world and whatnot, are really requiring that their cargo reduce emissions as it's being shipped through our gateway, the West Coast, and throughout the whole country and world. Lastly, ocean-going vessels, excuse me, vessel owners like Maersk, maybe you've heard of one of the largest shipping line or CMA CGM, they're increasing their requirements for new builds to be zero emission or near zero emission. So it's really exciting. There's a bunch of different fuels that they're exploring right now, whether it's e-methanol or hydrogen, things like that. So there's a lot of development and there's expectations that these new vessels, as they come online, move away or be dual-fueled so that they can move away from their cargo, or excuse me, their emissions. And then last but not least, trucks. Trucks are, we have over 4,000 trucks that serve our gateway in Seattle and Tacoma. We do have a clean truck requirement that says those trucks have to be 2007 or engine year or newer, which is a significant reduction in greenhouse gases, or yeah, greenhouse gases and carbon. But we're working on expediting to zero emission trucks. And so Steve's going to talk a little bit more about that. But we've got some really exciting pilot projects where we're building the infrastructure or piloting the infrastructure to not only have the charging capabilities or the other fueling capabilities, but also to bring those zero emission trucks into our gateway. Next slide, please. So this is something that many of you probably already heard about. I know our commissioners have, we have a Northwest Ports Cleaner Strategy. And we've had this strategy in place now for over 10 years. And it's really an exciting strategy. It's Seattle, Tacoma, and it's also the Seaport Alliance, and also Vancouver, BC. So it's an international strategy, in fact, for our entire gateway plus Vancouver, BC. And we are committed, and this has been adopted by our commissioners, we're committed to phase out all emissions by 2050. In fact, the Port of Tacoma, and Steve's going to talk a little bit more when he gets up here, just changed this policy so that we would phase out all our Scope 1, Scope 2 emissions by 2040. That was just recently adopted at the Port of Tacoma. So we're really excited about that. We recognize the port has a significant role to play. We recognize that there are impacts to local communities, and we want to do our part. And we're really committed to doing that. In fact, we've got a couple of cool examples where we've got an operator at our south SIM, South Intermodal Yard, that's got an all-electric yard truck fleet, as an example, which is the first one in our gateway, which is really cool. The port just authorized to purchase its first set of zero emission admin vehicles. So we've got, we're installing infrastructure to charge those vehicles right now. So port is really doing, putting its money where its mouth is. Next slide, and I'm going to turn this over to Steve. He's going to come up and talk about this. What I'll say about this, though, before I turn it over to Steve, is we really recognize that there are environmental and climate justice is a big part of what we do. And we've got commissioners that expect that to be in our decision-making so that they can, as we bring projects forward. This is an example of the Seattle area. We've obviously got ones for Tacoma and Pierce County as well. And Steve will talk a little bit about those. But it's really a key factor in how decisions are made at the port is what kind of impact are we having on the community? And how can we improve those impacts? And so just want to call that out. That's an expectation of the commission and our executive. And we're doing our best to follow through. With that, Steve, you want to come on up and bail me out?
Thanks, Jason. Next slide, please. I know we're running short on time, and we want to hear from Ryan, and then, of course, have a conversation. So I'm going to go through about 10 slides, kind of super quickly. I think my goal, just to give folks a flavor of what we're up to, you know, at the Port of Tacoma and the Northwest Seaport Alliance, as it relates to decarbonizing seaport activities. I thought it would be useful for folks to see the greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets that we have in place. And Jason already articulated these, and then those in place here at Pierce County, Pierce County, you'll hear about those from Ryan, and then at the City of Tacoma as well. Next slide, please. I thought it would also be helpful for folks to get a sense of the relative contribution of greenhouse gas emissions across the different seaport activities. So Jason mentioned our vision is to phase out all of these emissions by 2050 or sooner. This chart gives you a sense of where those emissions are coming from. So this is essentially our carbon footprint. And I won't belabor it in the interest of time, but I'll make a couple of points about it. One is that you can see right away that the majority of the emissions are from the ocean-going vessels, the cargo ships, et cetera, that are coming in and out of our terminals. About 50% of the greenhouse gas emissions are from those vessels before they arrive at the terminal. So while they're in transit in Puget Sound. And then another 5% or 6% of those emissions are while they're at birth and being unloaded and loaded. And then from there, the drayage trucks, to which Jason alluded, are about, about 27% of the greenhouse gases in our profile. Locomotives, the switcher locomotives are about 20. And then cargo handling equipment, harbor vessels, the tugs, for example, are about, you know, 7 or 8. So it gives you a sense of the relative contributions. Next slide, please. And then this gives you a sense of which of the three port entities, and I just want to underscore an excellent point that Jason made, which is that our decarbonization efforts are very much a partnership between the two home ports of Seattle and Tacoma, as well as the Northwest Seaport Alliance, the joint venture around cargo shipping activities by the two home ports, and then also the Vancouver Fraser Port Authority. This chart shows you which of those, which of the three port entities here in the Seattle Tacoma region has responsibility, if you will, for which of those emission sources. And so I just want to point out, for example, that you can see from this chart that about 90% of the emissions are related to the cargo shipping operations in Seattle and Tacoma, and therefore are the responsibility of the alliance. The Port of Seattle has responsibility for 10 or 11-ish percent of the emissions. Most of those are from the cruise industry. And then the Port of Tacoma has responsibility for, as you can see, a relatively small slice of the emissions, about 2%. Those are from the grain terminal, and then from the port's own buildings, facilities, vehicles, and fleets. Next slide, please. So now getting into some of the specific things that we're doing, and I will be quick here because I know we're short on time. So I'll just pick a few examples. Next slide, please. We have programs around most of those emission sources that I just described with a very strong priority on the top three. So that's the ocean-going vessels, the cargo handling equipment, and the drayage trucks. So I'll give a couple of examples about what we're doing in each of those arenas. This is our Clean Vessels Program. I mentioned that 6%, 7% of the emissions are, occur at birth while the, while the ships are here at our terminals. Obviously, we're very concerned about those emissions because of local exposure to them. So that's why we are so bullish on our shore power program. Hopefully, folks know that we have a very aggressive shore power program. And again, when I say "we" here, I'm referring to Port of Tacoma, Port of Seattle, and the Northwest Seaport Alliance, to install shore power infrastructure on all of our major cargo terminals by 2030. That's essentially infrastructure that allows big ships that are capable to come in and plug into our, as you know, very clean electricity grid and virtually eliminate their emissions while they're at birth. So it's a really, really important, very impactful program, also really complicated and expensive project. So we're making progress. We've got two done. That's Tote Maritime Terminal here in Tacoma and Terminal 5 up in Seattle. Construction is underway, excuse me, underway at the Husky Terminal. And also, the system is in design at Terminal 18. So we're kind of working toward this goal. Then there are the 50% or so I mentioned that are in transit. And as you can imagine, we have very little control over the emissions of these ships, you know, while they're traveling in and out of Puget Sound. And so as Jason mentioned, one of the things that we've been doing in the last couple of years is just really getting more active in the international arena, because that's where that game is played. It's the International Maritime Organization that sets those standards. And we've been putting, you know, more pressure on them to, for stronger policies, both incentives and regulations. And then we're also really involved in what I think is a very cool program. And I'll give a little bit more detail on this on my last slide. But we're involved in a study to look at the possibility of creating a green shipping corridor between Seattle, Tacoma, and Busan of South Korea. And again, I'll say a bit more about that in a moment because I think it's interesting and potentially very impactful. Next slide, please. Cargo handling equipment, those are the big machines that are Star Wars-looking machines that are traveling around the terminals, different types of machines, but heavy machines, and all historically powered by diesel. We've got about 750 pieces of this equipment in Seattle and Tacoma that we're seeking to transition to zero emission technologies by 2050 or sooner. As Jason mentioned, we have one project completed, the first deployment. It's working incredibly well. As Jason mentioned, it's at the South Intermodal Yard. If you ever have a chance to get down there and take a look at it, it's pretty cool. There are six all-electric yard tractors now that have been in operation for, I think, close to a year. And that was in partnership with the private sector operator of the rail yard, Rail Management Services. We brought a big federal grant in, about $800,000, to help drive the cost of that project down, work with Tacoma Public Utilities to install the infrastructure. So that's the kind of thing that we're pushing for with our marine terminal operators and our other private sector operating partners to kind of, you know, move more in that direction as that equipment comes online and becomes available and affordable here in our region. Next slide, please. Jason mentioned trucks. Trucks are a big deal. As I mentioned, they're a significant slice of the emission, emissions in our profile. And also importantly, the trucks are on the move, right? The trucks are moving. You know this here, you know it in Fife, you know it in Kent, Sumner. And of course, up in Seattle, too, these trucks are moving, you know, in, around, through neighborhoods, up and down freight quarters that have a lot of, you know, environmental justice overburdened communities living there. So we have a very strong focus on this. Jason mentioned our clean truck rule. I'll just mention a couple of things we're doing to help transition our drayage service providers to zero emission trucks by 2050 or sooner. This is going to be extremely difficult to do. Jason mentioned 4,000, 4,500 trucks that are serving the gateway hauling cargo, a lot of independent owner-operators, a lot of very small trucking companies. Many of you probably know some of these folks, you know, thin margins. These are, you know, currently very expensive trucks. There's no charging and fueling infrastructure yet for them. So we're going to have to be really smart and really collaborative about the way we move in the direction in partnership with these drayage service providers to zero emissions. So the two things we're doing, one, we're essentially raising money. We're securing state and federal grants to stand up an incentive program that will help some of our drayage service providers get into these trucks and build the infrastructure necessary, demonstration projects. We're going to launch our program. Hopefully, by the end of the year, the launch might slip into 2024, but it won't slip past that. We've raised $9.5 million so far. We have $26 million in federal grant proposals in the hopper. So we'll put that out on RFP and get some really cool partnerships happening, I think, in that way. We've also formed something called the Puget Sound Zero Emission Truck Collaborative, bringing various parties together to figure out how we're going to work together to get this done, truck manufacturers, trucking companies, near port communities, et cetera. Next slide, please. Am I out of time, pretty much? Okay. Next slide, please.
You're doing great.
We are doing a number of things. I mean, everyone knows the clean energy transition is happening. Nobody knows exactly, you know, how fast it's going to happen, how, you know, how expensive it's going to be. But we really, you know, it's happening. And the Port of Tacoma, with the Port of Seattle and the Northwest Seaport Alliance, we want to be and feel like we need to be kind of right in the thick of that. And we kind of envision ourselves being a clean energy hub out into the future, given how much energy, you know, is consumed by the various parties, you know, at the port. So a couple of examples of what we're doing, we're doing comprehensive energy planning studies in both the Tacoma Harbor and the Seattle Harbor, so we can get a better handle on how much clean energy are we going to need here, electricity, et cetera, if we are going to zero? And where is that going to come from? Working closely, of course, with Tacoma Public Utilities. We also are actively participating in a Pacific Northwest Clean Hydrogen Hub. We can talk more about that if there's interest. And we have this Green Corridor project going. I want to say one more quick thing about that before I yield the floor to Ryan. So if we can go to the next slide, we'll skip that one, go to the next slide. So this is a little bit about that project. We're working with the US Department of State, the US Department of Energy, and the Republic of Korea, and the Busan Port Authority, looking at a study. When you look at all the cargo that's currently traveling between the Busan region of South Korea and the Seattle Tacoma region of the United States, and there's a lot of it, what are the best opportunities for potentially greening one or more of those shipping quarters, meaning accelerating the transition to zero emission or lower, at least low emission, near zero emission vessels and fuels? And so doing a lot of analytical work on what, you know, what are the current cargo flows? What are the opportunities for cleaner alternative fuels, production and use on both sides, the Korea side and the US side, et cetera? We will have the pre-feasibility study completed by the end of the year. And the hope is that a announcement about next steps will be made at the big International Climate Conference, COP28, happening in Dubai in early December. And I think I'm going to skip the rest of my slides because I know that I'm over time. I had a few other examples of what we're doing, but I don't want to take up too much of the time. So I think I'll end it there. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Let me see if members of the Port Commission or members of the Pierce County Council have any questions about anything that we've heard from the port yet. Councilmember Croover.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering, are there any products being made in America or most of these transitions products, changing out ships?
Specifically on the vessel side? Yeah, the most of that's overseas, based on just some of the requirements and some of the, I think, other regulations. If it's a Jones vessel, if it's a Jones Act vessel, which means it serves, like, we have those, the tote example that goes from Tacoma to Alaska, that they have different requirements. That's an American flag vessel that has to be constructed here. But most of our container terminals are constructed overseas.
And the charging infrastructure for the units, do you pay for that, like they do a regular vehicle kind of thing?
For the vessels, for the shore power? Yeah, it's a really good question. In fact, in Tacoma, we negotiated a specific rate with Tacoma Public Utilities for shore power, which is really cool. So we can meter it separately. And then the marine terminal operator, who is our tenant, passes those costs on to the steamship line, or whatever the financial arrangement is. But the short answer to your question is it's metered separately, and those bills can be distributed to whoever needs to pay for it. The ports, the Seaport Alliance and the home ports have heretofore taken on the investment to install the infrastructure so that the vessels, when they come to a berth, can plug in. And it's very expensive.
And then I was going to ask on this chart, it says 2016, that it was using to designate, where'd it go? The... It had all the graphs on. Why am I not seeing it? This one?
Yeah.
Would that not have changed by now, since 2016? It should be a lot better.
Yeah, great question. So we do an inventory, emissions inventory, every five years, although we're a little bit late. So we're working on a new inventory, and that will adjust those numbers. That was based on the previously completed inventory.
And then, I didn't know if you have a guesstimate, with all of the new work that you're doing and investments being made, how much more is expected, you know, from what it would be now if you had that, those new numbers update, how much more emissions would be reduced with the investment going on now?
I don't think I can answer your question the way you want me to, but let me try this way. When we first did our first emissions inventory, and we created our first plan around air quality emissions, we had a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 20% from 2005, and diesel particulate by 100%, or excuse me, 80% by 2000, from 2005 standards. In 2020, we exceeded both those goals. So it's, I'm expecting good results, but it'd be a little bit premature to tell you exactly what they're, what they're like. But heretofore, progress to date has been very positive.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. We have a question from Councilmember Denson, then Councilmember Hitchen. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for being here. This is really exciting. I have to say, I love your aggressive goals. That is just awesome. And I also love how you are bringing in partners from private industry to get everybody on board and make sure everybody's working together. That's fantastic. My first question is, are you partnering with the labor unions? I'm thinking in particular, the Longshore and the Machinists, but there could be others that maybe want to be part of the conversations as you're moving towards greener, a greener port?
Yes, the short answer is yes. In fact, when it comes to shore power, it's typically the Longshore that actually does the plugging in of the vessels. And so they're a key partner in that. And then specifically around, like, trucks, that's another great example. We're actually working with the Washington State Labor Council so that we can get labor from not just the Teamsters, but from everybody represented as part of how we transition to zero emission trucks. So they're a key partner.
Excellent, excellent. And then my second question is on a different topic. You mentioned, and I'm forgetting the term you used, but working towards being a green energy hub, green hydrogen. You may be talking about this later, but I'm really, really interested in how the port is partnering, being a leader. And I think it's a huge opportunity for our area in terms of economic development, and obviously moving us in a forward-looking direction.
Yeah, we could go on forever. I know Steve's dying to talk about this because it's really his baby. The short answer is where we see the Seaport Alliance and the home ports is off-taker. So, meaning that we, once the hydrogen's available, we'll work with our partners and customers so that they can take that hydrogen and deploy it in our gateway. That's where we recommend our role to be. But we're also conveners. We're working with, you know, fuel manufacturers and things like that to make sure that they're talking. There's Washington State is in the process of potentially getting some funding from the federal government that would be significant, very significant for developing hydrogen infrastructure. And we've certainly been supportive and playing a role in advocating for that.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I know there's a lot of interest about the Green Hydrogen Hub. Perhaps we could have a follow-up work session about that. There's a tremendous amount of opportunity in our region and a lot of interest by this council. And I know you're a commissioner on those opportunities. Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. One of the points of data that's in here is around rail. And I didn't hear that come up in anything. So I'm wondering if conversations have started to talk with the rail industry about how we're moving things and how we decarbonize their industry.
Yeah, it's a great question. On one of Steve's slides, he mentioned the carve-out for emissions around rail. So we've got a great partnership with Tacoma Rail. And in fact, we've helped them secure funding to repower some of their engines to go from no tier to tier two, tier three. And right now, we're, they're in the lead, obviously, and we're supporting. But we understand that they're potentially looking for some opportunities to do some pilots for zero emission or electric hybrid technology. Much easier conversation with Tacoma Public or TPU and rail. When it comes to the main lines, the UP and the BN, it's a little bit more challenging. When it comes to the main lines, the UP and the BN, it's a little bit more challenging. Those are, you know, kind of federalized organizations. They recognize that they have a role to play too. We certainly talk about that. We're a discretionary port, so I don't want to get too much into port politic, you know, inside baseball, but we really rely on the rail to move our cargo to the to the central, you know, plane, Chicago, Memphis, things like that. So they're a key partner, but we certainly explored some green initiatives with them. We work with them quite extensively on infrastructure, like rail sightings, things like that, bridges, things like that. And we have more work to do when it comes to incentivizing them to to bring greener engines to the gateway.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Customer Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. Just a real quick question. So, I mean, these goals here, are they really aggressive or are they kind of in tandem of what everybody is looking to do? Mainly to be, to make sure that, you know, ports are competitive. Yeah, right. And if some people may look at that as a barrier, oh, we can't do business here because we don't have A, B, or C. Are we in tandem with the goals of other ports or are we like way, way ahead?
It's a really good question and it's a mixed bag. So ports on the West Coast, so LA, Long Beach, the two big ports in Southern California, they are much more aggressive in this space. Couple of different reasons for that. They are a non attainment right now. So meaning they're not meeting federal air quality standards. So they have to be more aggressive in that space. And the state is has several financial mechanisms in place to for that affords them to spend much more significant dollars when it comes to this. So so in that space, they're more aggressive. Other environmental areas around water quality, I would argue that Washington State's the most aggressive state when it comes to water quality. So it kind of depends on what the issues are. It rains a lot here. It doesn't rain as much there. You mentioned, you know, cargo being kind of discretionary. Cargo does not have to be come here to our gateway to, other than to serve our population. Much of it, fifty, sixty, seventy percent goes back east. So cost is a real key factor. And so that's always top of mind as we're making these decisions. I would argue, though, that where we are with our goals around twenty fifty and twenty forty for scope one, scope two is in line or slightly ahead of in general. And when it comes to the scope three emissions, council member, that is a billion plus dollar proposition. So, I mean, you know, when you think about vessels, trucks and all that sort of stuff. And so twenty fifty to some people is a real scary number, year commitment. And would many would argue that's that's super aggressive.
I did want to add.
Commission, customer Herrera, did you have any follow up before we move on to others?
I had another totally different question.
Do you mind if we stay on this thread for great commissioner?
I was just going to add something that the Pacific Maritime Shipping Association did a study that showed that we are the direct route from Asia to our gateway. And if cargo was diverted to the East Coast or the Gulf ports, it would increase GHG through the supply chain by twenty six percent. So we are probably, we are the cleanest, I would say, if you want products from Asia to the USA.
Customer recouver on this thread?
No.
Okay, back to you, customer Herrera.
One, another question, just on the owner operators, because, you know, as we know, the owner operators here and all across the country are usually first generation Americans and people of color. And this is like their first entrepreneurial type business. And it's much harder for them to convert possibly as we move forward to that. And I definitely don't want the port of Tacoma to be a nonstarter for for someone in this area because it gives people a lot of jobs. And that's like the springboard of becoming an American, a productive American. What's kind of incentives? I think you touched on it a little bit. What are some incentives for that very low grassroots worker who's supporting the port of Tacoma? You're getting freight moved.
Another great question. Our commission has been very attuned and very sensitive to this. This has been a big deal. When we created the new clean truck rule for two thousand eight, it was for two thousand seven engineer, model engineers. It was a significant concern. So some examples, we actually went to the state and changed state law so that the ports could create a loan loss program specifically so that we could help them with a financial guarantee to purchase a compliant truck. So that's just one example. But Steve's team has done a tremendous amount of job of gathering grant funding. And we have a scraps program today, which says you can turn in your old noncompliant truck and we'll give you ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, depending on what type of truck you want to purchase. And that's really geared to that community. And then we recognize to get to zero emissions, we're talking about orders of magnitude on those trucks, right? So he might be able to purchase a second or third hand truck today for, let's say, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. A zero emission trucks, three hundred thousand dollars. That's the kind of, or more. And plus, you need the charging infrastructure. So Steve and his team have created a a group, a working group. And we've sat down with those, that trucking community and all the trucking community, the larger fleets as well, and said, what can we do? How can we map out programs that will help the most to to make that conversion happen sooner? We recognize, though, that state and the feds are going to likely have to pony up substantial amount of funding in order to help that transition, at least in the short term, but probably mid to long term too.
Feature.
Customer recouver.
Follow up on that. That was my question is what is the percentage of the conversion that is happening that is based on state and federal grants versus the property taxes that you plug from the county?
I can't. So currently today, I'm not sure if this will fully answer your question. I'm trying. The conversions, the pilots or the scraps program that we've done to date has been primarily through state. And so that's how we're funding that conversion today.
As you had mentioned earlier, I believe the twenty six million in federal money coming up because of all the other convergences. Is that pretty much all of this conversion being done at the port through grants?
The ports have pointed up some contribution. Typically, when you get a federal grant, there's some sort of match. As an example, when it comes to shore power, we have an internal goal of getting fifty percent federally or state funded to help offset the costs. And then the home, the Seaport Alliance via the two home ports would pony up the other fifty percent. That could come out of a variety of different financial plots. And I I I probably shouldn't speak to that. Similarly, with our our truck program, our goal is, you know, to look for today is to look for about eighty percent grant funding. That means the Seaport Alliance via the two home ports would be ponying up roughly twenty percent. That's generally the requirement for a local match.
Thank you.
Thank you. Customer Bureau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the presentation. It's nice to get a room together finally and talk about these issues, goals, reliable. I mean, I appreciate them. You know, when I came on the council six years ago, it was the LNG battle. And Tote was leading the way. Where is that in all the mix here? Huge investment made.
Huge investment. The LNG plant is up and operational and Tote is taking that fuel. Tote has converted its entire fleet now and specifically the fleet that's here in the Northwest in Tacoma. And so there, those vessels are taking on that fuel today. And so that's, that's, that's good news for them and that that investment's being made. A couple of things about LNG and it's a, you know, highly debatable conversation. My recommendation to our executive and commission is that the the ports be fuel agnostic. Our goal is zero emissions and and don't necessarily want to specify how you get there with which which fuel. When it comes to LNG, we know for a fact, the science is, you know, undisputable that from a human health perspective, that diesel particulate that our longshoremen and others are breathing when they're operating at those facilities, that goes away with LNG. So that's the good news. When it comes to the greenhouse gas, that's really the debatable one. It's the carbon associated with with burning that. My understanding is is that that LNG or that natural gas comes from Canada. And the reason why is they can control any escape and the emissions a little bit better. And so, you know, that was a decision that Tote made, but that is fully functional and operational. And I would also say that as some of the international containers or international vessel owners, they're also looking at LNG as a potential different fuel technology too. So others are considering it as well.
Yeah, because I know that, you know, tri fuel is important within the industries and not to limit it just to one. The other question is, we were talking about the electrical. Is that mandatory when they pull in that they have to do the short electric?
Yeah, so that we have a tariff that was approved by our our commissioners, both in Seattle and Tacoma, referred to as meaning to members. And that tariff says that if the facility is capable of providing shore power and the vessel has shore power, they have to use it. So currently today, at our facility at Terminal Five in Seattle, the Seaport Alliance facility, they're plugging in. And then, of course, a tote here in Tacoma.
Okay, I follow the UK twenty fifty aviation goals of zero carbon. Just attended the Paris Air Show. That goal is going to be incredibly difficult. I imagine it's easier for some vessel that's already on the, in the ocean than a jetliner at twenty thousand feet up converting to an alternate fuel source. And the FAA, who guides all that, their level of safety is incredibly high. And the aviation industry hasn't changed in fifty years as far as their propulsion systems go. And for us to come up, granted, there's probably some great MIT people working on this. But the practicality of of doing some of these are just, you know, as we get, as the years click by, the attainability of these goals are like, I don't know how they're going to do it. But there again, nice to, you know, have have a goal and and work towards it and allow the markets to, you know, push this forward. Obviously, some regulations I am against as a policymaker. More market driven. And as long as the markets are headed in that direction, it's fine. You know, to force industry to make those changes, I think, brings its own challenge within our culture and the way we run things in America. So anyway, that's more of an observation than a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, customer morale. You can tell by the number of questions and the depth of our questions that we're very interested in the progress. It's really great to see President Keller and commission and staff, the really tangible progress that you all are making on this really, really important effort. So thank you for showcasing it. Thank you for not being performative about it. Thank you for giving us some really specific examples of the hard work, the important goals you've set for yourselves and for our community, and the really specific examples that you've demonstrated today. Thank you. There perhaps will be other questions after we get through our next presentation. As indicated, this this joint session is focused on decarbonization and stewardship, environmental stewardship. And we wanted an opportunity for the Pierce County Sustainable Resources Division to share a little bit about what's going on throughout Pierce County, economy wide, with with sustainability planning and specifically related to decarbonization. So I'm going to turn it over to our Sustainable Resources Administrator, Mr. Ryan Dix, for that presentation. Mr. Dix, good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Ryan Dix. It's great to see the commissioners as well as the council. And I work for Sustainable Resources in Public Works. First, I just want to say I've been doing, working in sustainability since around two thousand nine. And it is really heartwarming to see the progress that's being made by the port of Tacoma and the Seaport Alliance. And it is, there is a lot of work. It's expensive. It's hard. But the benefits will be numerous, both for air quality, for all of us who live and breathe in this airshed, as well as the water quality and other benefits of reducing particulate pollution, which is something when I was on the Air Agency Board for nine years, we spent a lot of time working on the wood smoke issue, which was extremely important to the port of Tacoma because of the 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 danger of going into non attainment. And so we are now in back entertainment and we're moving in the right direction on air quality. And this this work is actually really critical to that, especially as we start to deal more and more with the the wood smoke issues around forest fires, not around heating our homes anyway. So, all right, so with that, I'd like to give you just a very brief update on sustainability twenty thirty. Many of the council members here have already seen this presentation or a little bit of it. So we go to the next slide. In two thousand twenty, we developed our third sustainability plan for the county. And this was the first county plan that was county wide. It wasn't just looking at our buildings, our people and our cars. So we expanded to looking at the geography, almost a million people and a lot, a lot of opportunity to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by forty five percent. And that was the goal. So you can see where we were in two thousand fifteen, where we want to get to in two thousand thirty. What this slide doesn't show that is we did a new inventory in two thousand nineteen and our emissions actually went up by sixteen percent. So we've got a little bit higher bar to actually come down from. But the work that the port and others are doing is a critical piece to that component. We can't get to that greenhouse gas reduction without the port.
To be clear, Mr. Dixon, don't mean to interrupt the presentation, to to be clear, that increase is economy wide, not Pierce County operations.
Right. This is, this is the entire county. So it's a million people, economy wide, et cetera. Yeah, exactly. County operations went up by two percent in the four year process, but and now we believe we're going down, which is great news. So we go to the next slide. Real briefly, we've completed twenty four actions on the sustainability plan. We are continuing to move this forward. We expect to have a few more done before the end of the year. And as many of you know, we are in the process of updating this plan. And the port is a crucial component to that update. If we go to the next slide. Few things, key successes. We have started a CPACER program. It's county wide. It also works for the city of Tacoma as well. It's a way for commercial property owners to potentially do retrofits of their buildings. I know potentially in the port, there are some folks who could benefit from doing things like earthquake retrofits. If you're flooding, those sort of issues, you can also do retrofits. If you're just improving your HVAC and your windows, you could also potentially benefit from our CPACER program. So more to come on that. We also received ECBG dollars for Department of Energy. That money is going to go to working on building efficiency at Sprinker, the park, Sprinker. And then, as well as helping facilities do electrification county wide. We're working closely with many partners, expanding our tree programming. We're working on telework policy, EV readiness. Obviously, working with tribes is a huge component of our plan, especially on things like the land conservation plan, which we're working on as we speak. The county executive updated the electric first policy in March of two thousand twenty three. And that really is the focus of our internal work, moving towards electrification, both in our buildings and in our vehicles. And I am excited that I've heard at least that we have a Mach-E, a Ford Mustang Mach-E cop car, sheriff car, in this case, that will be on the streets soon. So I'm excited to see these, this little bit of progress that we're making. And lastly, equitable community engagement is critical to our work. We want to make sure everyone is interested, supporting and knowledgeable about what we're trying to do. If we're going to sort of remake how we do things, it has to come from everyone. It can't just come from the people that are able to show up to the meetings day to day. So next slide. This is how our missions are changing. I'm not going to spend a lot of time. You can see that they went up between two thousand fifteen and two thousand nineteen. The build environment, our buildings, a big piece, transportation. And then land use actually is a really surprisingly big piece as well. So as we see trees get cut down and replaced with buildings and development, there's a loss of carbon sequestration, as well as you've got now people commuting to that space, all sorts of things that go on with urbanization in general. So next slide. So our our key opportunities are existing building energy efficiency and electrification, trying to make sure we retrofit our buildings and our homes. A lot of the new buildings being built are being built to the higher energy code. And they're not, they're going to be part of a solution. But we have a lot of old buildings and those buildings aren't going to go anywhere. So we have to work to retrofit those. And that's really, I think, a critical piece of what I'll talk about next, which is the Inflation Reduction Act funding. On road vehicles, we know there's a lot of work being done, moving towards electrification, moving towards cleaner diesel, which is something the port has been heavily On road vehicles, we know there's a lot of work being done, moving towards electrification, moving towards cleaner diesel, which is something the port has been heavily. Involved in. All of these things are really important for us. It's focusing on making sure that the infrastructure is there. For electrification of our vehicles. Conserving land and trees is the other third and maybe even the largest opportunity. As we look at what what the county can do, what we have control over and have capacity to work on. Last, next slide. We have heard a lot from our community as we updated our plan. A lot of what we heard was interested in more green spaces, more trees, more community gardens. More education engagement with youth and community members. And then communities that are planned around transit and safety. A lot of people we talked to want to take transit don't always feel that it's a safer, a real option for them in terms of its frequency and viability there. They also are very interested in lower energy bills with new sustainable products. And so that is something we're going to be focused on as we move into the next plan. So if we go to the next slide, the the thing, we made a decision to to update our plan every two years, which seems. Like a silly thing to do in one hand, but on the other hand, we didn't know about something like the Inflation Reduction Act. There was no knowledge that that was coming. And so now we are able to improve our plan to focus on all this money that's going to come from the federal government. And it's going to help projects throughout our portfolio as well as throughout really the Port of Tacoma's portfolio is my guess. So there's a ton of opportunity to make sure that we bring these low, these federal dollars local. Because they're going to be available. They're all going to be, a lot of them are going to be grants that we're going to have to apply to and we're going to have to have partnerships with. And so this is really something that I'll I'll obviously talk more with Jason and Steve about. But how can we be part of supporting the ports work as they go through all that electrification work that they were talking about in their their plan? How can we help support them? How can we help support community groups? There's going to be just a lot of money to do those retrofits that are so expensive and challenging to do. And I think our goal is to make sure that a lot of that money comes back to Pierce County. And it's it's not just that it's cheaper to put in windows, but it's that companies that work in Pierce County are able to install those windows. And that's really, I think, one of our concerns and it may be a concern for the port as well. Do we have enough electricians? Do we have enough HVAC installers? Do we have the workforce here to do all this work? And I think that's part of the work on our shoulders as well as to try to create. Work with our community colleges and our high schools to try to figure out where these these programs, where these workers are going to come, who are going to do this work. So next slide. In our current plan, we have a port decarbonization's action. We've updated this briefly in our newest, our new update. But a lot of what we do is 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 we're more like a point guard in that we're not necessarily doing the work. But we're trying to be assisting someone else in in their wins. And that's certainly how we see our work with Port of Tacoma is we want to be supportive if there's letters of support. If there's other things we can be doing, let us know. But ultimately, this work is happening at a regional level. It's happening with the Port of Seattle as well. And so we're very excited about the electrification, all those ships that are not idling in our communities. There's a real benefit to that for everyone who works at the port first and foremost, but also the communities of Fife and the areas around the port. All benefits. So next slide. So the last thing, and I think this goes, I've said it kind of already, but the Sustainability Twenty Thirty Plan is completely dependent on successful partnerships with the major economic players in our region. The Port of Tacoma's leadership is critical to helping Pierce County meet our goals of a forty five percent greenhouse gas reduction. We plan to continue to work in partnership with the Port of Tacoma on building and fleet electrification, equity and community engagement. As well as communication about greenhouse gas reduction efforts that are going on. So we want to tell your story. When you have a positive story to tell, we want to be a part of getting that out to our community. Ultimately, working together, we can improve our air quality, our water quality and human health for the residents of Pierce County who we all work for. So I'll leave it with that. Thank you.
Mr. Dix, thank you for that update. I know you could have spent a ton longer going into a lot more detail about the. How many, how many different strategies and actions in the plan?
There are like seventy two roughly.
There there's a lot more detail.
There's even more.
This was the abbreviated version for sure, but thank you for highlighting it and and also helping our peers at the Port Tacoma Commission. See our consistency and in the work we're doing together. Questions for Mr. Dix about anything discussed here before we have a more open ended discussion? Mr. Dix, you you've made the point that we've decided in Pierce County to to do every two year planning, to update our sustainability plan every two years. Can you remind us, how often do we do a economy wide emissions inventory?
Yeah, we've done that with in partnership with the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, Stehalmish County, King County and Kitsap County. And so the last inventory was for the twenty nineteen year. We are likely to move forward with, I believe, one for twenty twenty three. But you really can't do that until probably closer to twenty twenty five. And that process unfortunately takes another year plus. So we we should have twenty twenty three information likely in like twenty twenty five. And so it's I'd like it to be sooner, but it is, it's a process. But that's, I've been pushing because you, there's a lot of interest in sort of post COVID numbers, what's changed and how our economy works and how our, you know, region works. So I'm hopeful that we will have that in a couple of years' time.
Thank you for explaining that to us, Commissioner Marzano.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just curious, because there was a nineteen percent increase in Pierce County.
Yeah.
How about the other counties? Did they see an increase also?
Yeah, I think I believe, I believe all the counties saw an increase. King County's maybe it was was less than ours. It was maybe, I'd be guessing, but it was, it was, it was definitely increase everywhere. Ours was on the on the higher side. I think maybe Kitsap was also there, but I could get that information to you.
But by and large, mainly for the same reasons.
Yeah, a lot of growth. If you think back to twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen, we had a lot of people move here, a lot of new houses, just a lot of. Posit- positive economic news necessarily, but yeah.
We're gonna have a lot more people moving here too.
Yeah, that's for sure.
They're coming. It's a beautiful region. People want to move here. Are there other questions about what we heard from this presentation?
Just real quickly, I I know you're a great photographer and I looked at the last slide. Does that happen to be a picture that we took?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
He didn't charge the government for it, it's pro bono.
Well, the port's in the background, so I thought it'd be kind of fun, but.
Mr. Dix, thank you very much for your presentation. We now have time, President Keller and and colleagues around the table for any o- open ended discussion, if there is any, anything that we've heard today. Anything else since we are in this joint session together, which does not happen very often. I'm going to going to kick off the discussion. I'm gonna, if I could, President Keller, put put you and. Director Johnson on the spot. I think you have some really exciting news that you released late last week. About some workforce development initiative that the port is leading with Tacoma Public Schools, but it'll be a benefit for the entire county, as I understand it. With the Maritime Skills Center. Can I put you and Director Johnson on the spot to share a little bit about what's going on with the Maritime Skills Center?
I'll let Executive Director Johnson describe.
Thank you, Chairman for the question. Yes, we have an, we put forward some exciting news last week that we've been working in partnership with the Tacoma Public Schools. To develop a maritime skills center here in our community. It will be county wide. It will not be strictly for Tacoma schools will be the sponsor, but it will be more like the school of the arts. Model where all the, you know, all the school districts can partner with it. So you can benefit from this, whatever school district the children are in. But we are going to be working with them to site this facility on the Theophas Waterway, just, you know, down below you here. On the along the Wheeler Osgood and it's going to be a joint facility, part Maritime Skills Center and part administration for the Port of Tacoma. We're going to be moving our offices basically from where we are now, which made sense in nineteen eighty three and doesn't make sense in twenty twenty three. And so it's going to be a tremendous facility for the community. We're really excited about it. It's going to be something that we're going to be gathering input from the community on how it looks. We we don't ask for a picture of it yet because we don't have a picture of it yet. We want to get people's opinions on what it should look like, what kind of, what kind of interactions we need to have with the waterway. Public access, all that kind of thing. So it's going to be a really, really interesting and fun thing for us to be doing over the next couple of years. Going to be revitalizing an area of the waterfront that has been pretty underutilized for a very long time. And we're excited about it. And I'll turn it back to Commissioner Keller and our like other colleagues to add to that if they want.
Great. Thank you. I'll just add with this, maybe Jason, you could speak a little bit to this. But we're, we've been working very closely with the Puyallup Tribe of Indians and making sure that 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 site is preserved. That the cultural significance is and working with their tribal cultural.
Yeah, I I should have mentioned that. Thank you, Commissioner Keller. Yes, we, the 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 entire area of the tide flats in that, in that part of. Of historically, the Theophas Waterway is culturally very significant to the Puyallup Tribe. That was an area where they had, they had, they lived and and worked and fished and everything. So we have been embarking on an extraordinarily complex series of culturally. Of sampling the soils for cultural resources. Probably the most thorough cultural resources inventory that's ever been done in that area, honestly. And we've been extremely careful to reaching out to the tribe, working with them consistently. And so far, so good. We've, we've had good results so far with our, we haven't found anything significant. And we're going to keep looking. So just want to put, point that out. That was an important point to make. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Well, that's really exciting. Really want to congratulate you for not only your leadership you demonstrated today on decarbonization and environmental stewardship. But your leadership in workforce development, hundreds of new students will be able to go to this new.
We really want to link the 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 students in this community with the jobs in the tide flats.
It's spectacular.
That's the, that's the bridge that we're trying to create.
Other, um, other discussion items that any member around the table wishes to bring up, customer.
Bring up, just because some constituents are maybe talking about, you know, West Rock is leaving the board. And that's gonna probably have some ripple effect. A lot of jobs are leaving. And of course, everyone's big question is like, what's going to happen in the future? Like that land is some valuable land in port that in the port. And the ripple effects of our local mills that supplied a lot of the wood products to that place. What can we tell our constituents of what that's going to look like, I guess, in the future?
Thank you. Director Johnson, invite you back to the podium. I know the, correct me if I'm wrong. The West Rock facility is a privately owned facility. This is not a Port of Tacoma owned facility, but I'm sure you know something about.
Chairman, yes, that that is a privately owned facility on privately owned land. They've owned it for over a hundred years there and they and their predecessors. I'll tell you the same thing I told the newspaper, which is the port is not ruling anything out. We are looking at that, at the possibilities. However, the West Rock company is in the driver's seat for this facility. They own it. They're the ones that are going to be making the decisions. We can't tell them what to do. We are pondering opportunities, but there's been absolutely no decision made by the Port Commission whatsoever. I can't promise a thing. But I can tell you that there are opportunities there and we are not blind to those opportunities. But I will also tell you that there have been absolutely no decisions made whatsoever. And any of my bosses can weigh in on that if they would like to, but they have, they have not directed me to do anything yet.
Thank you. We we do know, while it's not a, while Rush Rock is not a Port of Tacoma facility, four hundred, more than four hundred family wage jobs are there. We know their labor union is working hard to try to place them either in other facilities in Washington State around the country. Or we help work with other partners like Workforce Central. To reskill if necessary, retrain if necessary and replace in another high wage job or high wage career. So we're very concerned about those, those employees and those individuals, if if we can keep them here and make sure they have new employment that can meet their families' needs. Our partners very much want to engage in that. Thank you for asking the question, customer. Customer morale. I don't know how far you want to go unless you want to get your steps in, Director Johnson.
Might as well just park up there, save energy. Mr. Keller, and I'll address this and then you could send it up to whoever. Pertaining to, you know, we bought up West Rock, but I know the port is really pushing to. Reclaim contaminated land down in the port and remediation work taking place. How many acres do you have down there that are considered contaminated? And what is the plan to bring those properties back? And can we help at the council level?
A very good question. I used to joke, I still joke sometimes, if there's any contaminated property in the tide flats that we don't already own, we're probably on our way to buy it. We are, one of the things that we are extremely proud of as far as our environmental record goes, is cleaning up contaminated properties. Jason didn't mention that earlier. It was an air quality presentation, but we are as good as anybody, better than most at buying and cleaning up properties. And so we have remediated hundreds of acres. Jason can give me the number, but I'll just say it's in the hundreds. We are in the process of cleaning up a couple of sites that are very significant. One is the, what's called the Arkema site, which used to be the Penn Salt site on the Hilo Bos Waterway. It's about the middle of the Hilo Bos Waterway on the west side. Former chemical plant that the port bought in two thousand and seven or eight. It's about, what is it, sixty acres, Jason, about? Yeah. Uh and we've been working with the Department of Ecology to develop a cleanup plan for that site. It's hammered. That site is contaminated. And we are working to redevelop the less contaminated portions of it first. And then the more contaminated portions of it in the outer years. And then we've already cleaned up the old Kaiser Aluminum Plant, the old Reichhold Chemical Plant, a number of other places down there. There are smaller ones. That we bought and cleaned up. The big one that is, that really is kind of a headache for everybody is the old Hooker Chemical Plant, which is. Occidental now owns that. It's at the tip of the peninsula between the Hilo Bos and Blair Waterways, where the old shipyard used to be. It's just next to that. We don't own that property. We did not contaminate that property. That was done by the Hooker Company. But the plume, the groundwater plume that comes down out of that plant and goes underneath the old shipyard that we own now, which is a tremendous. Asset for us in terms of shipbuilding. That's, that's where Safe Boats is and Silverback Marine and and some of those companies. There's a huge amount of potential there for creating boat building and shipbuilding jobs. But we have to get that property in a state where the Department of Ecology will let us continue to work on it and we're doing that now. So that's about forty, I think it's about a forty acre site, huge potential. So there are a whole bunch of places that I can point to and I won't go into more detail right now. But rest assured, we are spending a lot of time working on cleaning up contaminated properties. And I have told the commission and they have directed me to be aggressive in this space. So since I've come here, I used to work at the Reichhold Plant when I was in college, by the way, so I actually saw that stuff happen in real time. I have, I have determined that we are going to make real progress while I'm here and getting those sites cleaned up. I'm tired of having them driving by and seeing all this bare land. We're, we're working. The commission has been very supportive in that area. They've said, go. And I've said, let's go. So Jason's team has been buckling at the knees as we've been driving them ahead, saying, let's get this behind us. Because we can do this, but it's going to take, we have, it takes some, some focus. But the commission is focused on that. It's part of our strategic plan.
Thank you for that question. Other questions or comments, anyone around the table? Customer hit you.
Thank you, Chair. More comment. The last slide in Mr. Dix's presentation says partnership is critical. And we, when we look at the the county's goal of twenty twenty, twenty thirties emission plan. And then whatever our next goal is, because there will be a next goal. It is going to take a partnership because the port is one of the drivers of of a lot of the industry in our community. And so I really appreciate this conversation. I appreciate the work that you're doing and continuing to champion. Love what you're doing with your stormwater runoff, with the treatment that you're doing right on site. And I've been several of the remediation. The story of the twisted trees runs through my head. Anytime somebody says the Port of Tacoma, I go twisted trees. And it's like. It was an amazing thing to see what you've done in that area that I think probably a decade ago or more, people would have just. Man, we can't, we can't solve this. It's too big and you've taken it on. So truly appreciate the work you're doing there and continuing to be a dry. And continuing to be a driving force in the economy in our county. So you're doing both, which is so important. So just wanted to express my appreciation and and continued emphasis on partnering and seeing how we can continue to move together. Because I think it takes both of us. We won't hit our goal as a county without the port doing their part. So we're kind of pushing each other and I don't want us to ever be a shove because that's not effective. That's why a partnership is so important. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, President Keller, I'm always invite you for some closing comments and I'll make some closing comments. Then we'll then I'm going to invite us both to get under the county seal and take a photo together to commemorate this really important moment. But if I can turn it over to you for some closing reflections and comments.
Thank you, Chairman. I think thank you for making those comments. I think partnership is the way that we get there. You know, the quickest way to get there. When you talked about West Rock, we also we saw on the Tacoma Weekly, several of us said we need to partner together to solve these kinds of problems. And I want to thank our staff. Our team is absolutely amazing. We have 18 members of our environmental team. I think that probably one of the most frustrating things that for me as a commissioner is the length of time that it takes to get things done. You know, that's that's the governmental piece of moving at a glacial speed. And I think we've talked about the Arkema site, for instance. The other day when staff was talking about doing cleanup at that site, I said, how long has that been a brownfield site since 1981? Not being put into productive use. So it's been a dance with ecology, trying to figure that out to come up with a design plan that they will buy off on so that we can get it cleaned up. So that, you know, that's part of the frustration. I think you have commissioners here who are really pushing and you heard Executive Director Johnson talking about that. But we really appreciate the partnership. Looking forward to more of these work study sessions. This this has been a great opportunity for all of us. And hopefully we will. I know that Commissioner McCarthy and I and Director Johnson went to the ports of Rotterdam and Antwerp to talk about you know, these green strategies for hydrogen fuels and things like that. I think we plan on doing another one and we'd love to have council members go with us as part of our delegation so we can figure out what looks great for our area and and how we can make this work together. So but thank you so very much for hosting and the great opportunity. Thank you, staff and commissioners for being here and council members. Thank you.
Well, thank you, President Keller. Thank you to our colleagues at the Port Tacoma Commission. Thank you for joining us here and having this really important conversation. As we noted at the beginning of the conversation, this is the first time that we've had a joint meeting of any kind with any legislative body in a very, very long time. I won't say I don't know when it was, but it's been a very, very long time. And that it's with our peers at the Port Tacoma Commission and it's focused on decarbonization, environmental stewardship is very significant. And that you've been able to demonstrate today with a lot of specifics. You know, together, we've been able to have this conversation that our economy and our environment are not mutually exclusive. Folks don't shouldn't have to go to the hospital and breathe dirty air and get long time illnesses and diseases and chronic and chronic illnesses simply because they're working. That doesn't have to be that way. That people should be able to live long, healthy, productive, economically viable lives and all of us deserve all of that. And that we're able to demonstrate that that's that's not mutually exclusive is just really great for our region. I also want to thank the Port of Tacoma for being an active participant in the first, what we're calling the Pierce County Climate Conversation. Commissioners Ang and Keller joined as representatives from the Port of Tacoma. Four of us convened all the cities and towns in the Port of Tacoma in June for the first ever climate conversation. So 14 cities and towns and the Port of Tacoma and Metro Parks Tacoma joined us for that very first one. There's a second conversation coming up here in September. And we just again, that continues to to, you know, illustrate your commitment to the partnership, your commitment to the work and working together. And and seeing these best laid plans move to fruition. So on behalf of the Pierce County Council, thank you for joining us today for this joint session. We look forward to more of the implementation of much of what we talked about today. I'm going to soon call a recess. The Pierce County Council will reconvene in about 10 minutes. So at 1:35 for the rest of our Tuesday study session. And I'd like to invite the Port of Tacoma Commission underneath our county seal to take a picture to commemorate the moment. And with that, we will be at recess until 1:35.
Awesome.
The council is back from its brief recess after our joint study session with the Port of Tacoma. Thank you again to our staff who helped facilitate and organize that that joint study session. We appreciate the work. That brings us to item number three, review of today's council meeting agenda. I'd like to call on Ms. Long to brief the council.
All right. Thank you and good afternoon. This is this afternoon's council agenda. It is amended. Go right to your consent agenda under B. Items for introduction scheduling under one ordinances, you have two items. The first is 2023-38. This is repealing chapter nine 12 of the code relating to the misdemeanor crime of intending to commit suicide. This you'll be referring this to public safety and setting the final for September 19. The second has been added. You'll see it shaded. It's 2023-40. This is relating to the Pierce Conservation District amending a previously adopted ordinance recognizing the city of Edgewood's incorporation into the district. And this is for referral to CDC and you'll be setting the final on this for September 26. Moving to two resolutions, you have our 2023-125S. And this is acknowledging receipt of the Citizen Advisory Board's recommendations for funding the purchase of conservation futures properties and authorizing the executive to negotiate the purchase of those. This received a due pass is substituted at CDC on August 16 and you'll be setting the final on that one for September 19. Next, you have our 2023-134. And this is granting the executive authority to execute an interlocal agreement between the county and Pierce Transit relating to law enforcement services. This is for referral to rules and you'll be setting the final on that for September 26. Next is our 2023-135 and this is similar. This is the executive authority to execute an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the city of Furcrest for the provision of law enforcement chief services. And this is for referral to rules and you'll be setting the final on this for September 26 as well. Next, you have our 2023-136. And this is similar to the previous two related to an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the city of Tacoma for the provision of services and facility for the Pierce County Jail. This is for referral to rules and you'll be setting the final on that for September 26 also. Moving now to section seven proclamations, you have two this afternoon. The first is proclaiming September 9 as Blue Zones Project Parkland Spanaway Day in Pierce County. And council member, well, there are two requesters, council members Campbell and Hitchen on that one. Next, you have a proclamation proclaiming September 2023 as a National Preparedness Month in Pierce County. And that was requested by Councilmember Dunson. You have one ordinance this afternoon. That's 2023-32. This is ratifying a collective bargaining agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local 925. And this received a due pass at rules on August 21. And under section nine resolutions, you have our 2023-126. This is authorizing the surface water management to accept funding from the Recreation and Conservation Office for the Pierce County Lead Entity Program. And this received a due pass at rules on August 28. Number two, and the last item on your agenda is our 2023-133. This is amending resolution R 2023-72, establishing the meeting times and for council retreats and committees of the whole for this year's budget hearings. Retreats and committees of the whole for this year's budget hearings. And those are your agenda items for this afternoon's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Let's. Make sure we know who's going to be reading the two proclamations today. First Chair Campbell, what is the desire on the Blue Zones proclamation?
Sorry about that. Was having trouble. I'm muting for a second. I plan to be back there by the three o'clock meeting, so I will go ahead and read it.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. So Fosher Campbell will read our Blue Zones proclamation. We do have the National Preparedness. Proclamation and I know that Councilmember Denson will not be in attendance at the three P M. Meeting.
I wouldn't mind. I thought I requested to be on it, but maybe I didn't. But as a member of the cert team, I wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Cooper will, will read our proclamation related to national preparedness. We have the guests fully planned and coordinated for both those proclamations. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. I, I wanted to also just note the last item on, on the agenda related to resolutions. We have the. The resolution to adopt the updated calendar for council's budget calendar. Ms. Murray has worked with the team to set out the, we talked about this previously, but I just want to really make sure we're on the same page. Ms. Murray has worked with the team to pre-plan the dates. We think council is going to need to have the many briefings and. Conversations deliberations council needs to write its budget. There's a lot, there's a lot to juggle and there's, there's a lot to try to stay out of the way of, right? So we're doing our best. But I want to be clear, we've, we are not over programming the Board of Health. We've stayed away from. Over programming on the Board of Health dates because of that business absolutely must continue. There are times where we. Are, you will see in the schedule, we do over program, not because we want to, but because we have to find the time. We do over program Puget Sound Regional Council. Committee meetings at times, like the Growth Management Policy Board as an example, we do over program those. And we'll do everything we can, of course, to stay out of the way of the flood control zone districts. So the flood control zone district can continue to do its work. Through the budget season. And, and likewise, the Select Committee on Homelessness. All that to just say, there are a lot of conflicts to try to stay clear of. It is impossible to stay out of every conflict. But we'll work together to make sure that all these various governing boards can, can do its, do its work. The Puget Sound Regional Council is one place in looking at the calendar. It did become unavoidable to program over. Many of the PSRC dates. So I wanted to be clear about that. If anyone's seeing any really glaring, you know, really glaring conflicts that you need us to figure out how to. Be attuned to, please get with Ms. Murray or myself and we will do that. But assuming we adopt the, the resolution. That's on the agenda today, the, our clerks team will then do the, the proper noticing. We, we will have a whole effort to get the word out to the broader community about our budget deliberation. So the public can. Be in tune and all of our calendars will get populated accordingly. So I wanted to make note of all those next steps after today's. Council action on the budget calendar. Any other questions or comments about today's council meeting agenda? Not seeing any, that's going to move us to item four, review of committee agendas for the week. Ms. Long.
All right. Thank you. So in addition to this afternoon's three o'clock council meeting tomorrow. At ten A M. Is a committee of the whole and your agenda items include the second quarter financial report and that will be with the finance department. Folks and then a review of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five by any budget calendar. And the changes and that will be Mr. Bokey. So that's tomorrow morning at ten. And that's, that's it for this week.
Thank you. Any questions about the committee agendas for the week? The packet has already gone out for committee of the whole for tomorrow. So that is in everyone's inboxes. Item number five is external boards and commissions. I'd like to start with Mr. Swanson on anything of note with the Pierce County Regional Council or Puget Sound Regional Council. Mr. Swanson.
Thank you, Chair Mello. Yeah, as you mentioned, we are, we are overbooked for the Economic Development District Board meeting for Puget Sound Regional Council tomorrow. There are several, several agenda items of interest. Mainly their twenty twenty-four legislative recommendations. And the military and defense sector economic impact analysis. We'll be working with staff there to make sure. We get that information and it can be distributed, you know, through councilor Morrell to the council. And then Thursday, the Growth Management Policy Board has its first meeting back from summer hiatus that they had and there are. The, the main item of note there that staff will be monitoring is up for, for a review there. Is the Pierce County Countywide Planning Policy Certification. So we'll be monitoring that. And then getting into next week's calendar, the Transportation Policy Board will be meeting, I believe that is, let me bring up, yeah, it's next Thursday they meet. Reserves, the agenda is on the fourteenth, yeah, the Transportation Policy Board meets. That agenda is not posted as of yet. But when it is, we'll be sure to get that distributed to both yourself and Councilmember Campbell. Ahead of that meeting with as much time in advance as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Does any member have any other external board and commission updates? Not seeing any other external board and commission updates. So we'll move to item six, discussion of administrative items. Ms. Murray.
I have nothing to discuss. Thanks.
Thank you. Item number seven is chair's topics. I will briefly note that. We did, we talked about this at the Rules and Operations Committee. We, we are in the middle of updating. Many job descriptions here in the office of the Pierce County Council. Ms. Murray is leading that effort on our behalf. Especially for the positions that report through her. Either directly or indirectly. The Chief Legal Counsel, which reports directly to the county council, that job description is also being updated. Please look before the end of the week for an updated. Draft. Job description for our Chief Legal Counsel. I've been working with Ms. Long. On this to update it and make sure it's modern and updated. And it will be the topic of a conversation at, at a meeting of the county council next week, similar to how the Rules and Operations Committee. Review the council assistant three job descriptions today, again, so that Ms. Murray can continue to work on. On our behalf to continue to advance the class and compensation study work that the council directed a few weeks ago. So please be on the lookout for the Chief Legal Counsel job description update. That's all I have. That moves us to other business proclamation review. There are two proclamations scheduled for next week, Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. And National POW MIA Day, both scheduled for next Tuesday, September twelfth. The Rules and Operations Committee made a decision. To utilize our flag policy here in council chambers and will be in, in. Tandem with the National POW MIA Day proclamation. The Rules and Operations Committee authorized the, the display of the POW MIA. Flag here in council chambers so we can commemorate that. That day as well. And thank you, Councilmember Herrera for helping to make sure we can do that quickly and appropriately. Are there any other items of business by members of the county council? Not seeing any Ms. Murray, Ms. Long, any other business for council. So you know the business before the Pierce County Council on Tuesday study session, we argued.